All right, the time is now 6:00 PM. We will begin the public hearing. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending the Connecticut Department of Transportation Public Hearing for the 2023 Bus and Rail Service and Fair Equity Analysis, also known as the SAFE analysis. My name is Dan Baker. I'm a Senior Transportation Planner with the Connecticut DOT Bureau of Public Transportation. I will be moderating tonight's hearing. Tonight's hearing will include a 28-minute presentation on the Service and Fair Equity Analysis and provide information on the proposed rail service and fare changes and the proposed bus service changes. Following the presentation, we will open up the hearing to comments from members of the public. You will be called by name if you have signed in. You will have three minutes to share your comments with the panelists. Panelists joining us this evening from the Connecticut Department of Transportation include Transit Administrator Lisa Rivers, Bureau Chief of Public Transportation Ben Limer, and Assistant Rail Administrator Eric Bergeron. Spanish-speaking interpreters are available to assist any members of the public looking to provide comment during this hearing. At this time, I will turn it over to Public Transportation Bureau Chief Ben Limer for opening remarks.
Okay, thank you, Dan, and good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to the public hearing this evening on the proposed both transit service changes as well as the fare changes that are included in the CT DOT's Service and Fair Equity Analysis, otherwise known as SAFE, so you'll hear that term often tonight. Your attendance and input at the hearing are valued and absolutely critical to all the work we do to make sure that we deliver a safe, accessible, and equitable public transportation system throughout the state. All comments received during tonight's hearing and throughout the entire public comment period will be recorded and carefully reviewed and considered as we finalize the proposed both service and fare changes that will be included in the SAFE study. Just a little bit of background. In June of 2023, the Connecticut State Legislature adopted a bipartisan biannual budget that was signed by the governor. This budget included a record investment in the expansion of bus services. It also included funding reductions for Metro North Railroad Services in fiscal year '24, as well as Shoreline East Services in fiscal years '24 and '25. With this funding, with the bus transportation, we are proposing to expand new routes with longer hours and dedicated connections to major employment centers, downtown areas, as well as commercial strips. These proposals are based directly on customer feedback that we have been hearing, and these proposals reflect the very strong ridership levels and increased overall demand of bus services across the state. What you will hear tonight details these enhancements, and I want you all to know that there are several other adjustments that didn't meet a particular federal threshold that can be found on our website. So there's more changes than what you will see tonight. The DOT team has been very closely monitoring ridership patterns and data across all of the rail lines dating back to 2018, 2019, before the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. Historic and current ridership levels were compared to service levels for each and every rail line to determine which rail lines would receive some of those service modifications. On top of that, we had our team out validating a lot of the data patterns that we were seeing. So we really took a surgical and strategic review. Since ridership has rebounded significantly on the Hartford Line and the Waterbury Branch Line, those two lines are not included in the proposed service modifications. However, the review of data indicated that the Shoreline East weekday services and the Metro North services, specifically the New Haven Line service on Fridays, were not seeing the same recovery rate and therefore were identified for proposed service modifications. Our team worked tirelessly with their rail service providers partners at Metro North, as well as Amtrak, to produce customized schedules that reflect the current travel patterns and ridership levels overall. Those proposed rail schedules and service levels are included in the SAFE study, and we will go over those in detail tonight. So the upcoming presentation will provide all of the details and information on the proposed service changes, including in the SAFE study. I do want to point out that the presentation is 28 minutes. It's prerecorded, has a ton of information. Please, you know, pay attention to all of it or pay, you know, pay particular attention to the area that's being changed that is of most interest to you. But in general, please hang with us because it is 28 minutes, lots of info, and we want to make sure that you hear all of the information. So with that, thank you once again for taking time out of your busy schedules, and I will give it back to Dan.
Thanks, Ben. And we'll start the presentation at this time.
Welcome to the Connecticut Department of Transportation Bus and Rail Service and Fair Equity Hearing. We will cover the following today: Title VI and voluntary feedback survey; translations and hearing recordings; how to provide comments; service and fair equity; SAFE analysis overview; review proposed service and fare changes; review the service and fair equity analysis; next steps. Here are public comments regarding the SAFE. The Connecticut Department of Transportation is committed to ensuring that no person is excluded from participation, denied benefits, or otherwise subjected to discrimination under any program or activity on the basis of race, color, or national origin. Please visit our website at https://portal.ct.gov/dot/business/contract-compliance/Title-VI-page for more information on our Title VI programs and your rights under Title VI. We encourage you to complete the voluntary feedback survey. Survey information helps the department conduct the most inclusive and representative outreach possible. Survey responses are anonymous and will be used strictly to achieve this goal. The link to the survey can be accessed at the bottom of the SAFE webpage After the public hearings, a recording of the formal presentation will be posted to YouTube. Closed captioning, including non-English translation options, will be available. Please visit www.ct.gov/dot-proposed-transit-changes for links to live streams and recordings.
Después de las audiencias, se publicará en YouTube una grabación de la presentación formal. Habrá subtítulos disponibles, incluidas las opciones de traducción que no estén en inglés. Visite la página web para obtener enlaces a transmisiones en vivo y grabaciones. A W W W.CT.GO V slash DOT slash proposed transit changes.
How to provide comment. Comments regarding the proposed service and fare changes and service and fair equity analysis can be made in a variety of ways. One is by making a public statement during today's public hearing. Additional methods include submitting a comment via email at dotproposedtransitchanges@ct.gov. You can comment by leaving a voicemail at 860-594-3612. You can comment by mail, sending your written comments to comments on proposed service and fare changes, Connecticut Department of Transportation, 2800 Berlin Turnpike, P.O. Box 317546, Newington, Connecticut, Or you may visit one of the following libraries and fill out a comment form. The libraries include Waterbury's Silas Bronson Library, New Haven Free Public Library, the Public Library of New London, Hartford Public Library, Park Street Branch, and Bridgeport Public Library. Comments will be accepted until 11:59 PM on October 6, 2023. The Service and Fair Equity Analysis presentation will now begin. In accordance with the Federal Transit Administration, or FTA, circular 4702.1B, the department is required to conduct a Service and Fair Equity Analysis, also known as the SAFE, of proposed fare changes and major service changes to determine if the changes will have a disparate impact on minority customers or disproportionate burden on low-income customers. This analysis is also required for temporary major service changes that have continued beyond 12 months and temporary fare changes beyond six months. This is the process we will follow for the Service and Fair Equity Analysis. We are in the public hearing stage. The public comment period for the SAFE began on September 18, 2023, with the release of the draft SAFE document and will conclude on October 6, 2023. Following conclusion of the comment period, all public comments will be considered by the department in the finalization of the SAFE analysis. The department's FTA Title VI program for fiscal year 2021 through 2023 defines a major service change as any service change meeting at least one of the following criteria: route restructuring actions resulting in at least a 20% change in overall route length; service frequency changes that result in a 25% or more change in annual revenue vehicle miles (RVM). Annual RVMs are a compilation of weekday and weekend RVMs; a service change adding or reducing service to a fixed guideway station resulting in a greater than 25% change in a service at the station; service change actions resulting in at least a one-hour change in service span. There are other bus service changes currently proposed throughout the state that are not included in this SAFE analysis. Per FTA guidance, an equity analysis is only required for proposed bus changes in the CT Transit Hartford and New Haven divisions, as those divisions operate 50 or more fixed route vehicles during peak service. All major service changes are analyzed to determine whether the proposed changes will have a disparate impact or produce a disproportionate burden. Disparate impact refers to the facially neutral policy or practice that disproportionately affects members of a group identified by race, color, or national origin. Disproportionate burden refers to a facially neutral policy or practice that disproportionately affects low-income populations. The table on the screen shows rail ridership trends compared to service levels on all rail lines in the state of Connecticut from 2019 to present day. The row titled "2021% of 2019 Service" shows both the percent of service in 2021 compared to 2019 and the percent of ridership in 2021 compared to 2019. As you can see, service was reduced on all rail lines except Waterbury Line following the onset of the pandemic in March 2020. The row titled "2023% of 2019 Service" shows how ridership service levels in 2023 compares to 2019. The row titled "2024 Overall Budget as a Percent of 2019 Service" shows the approved percent of funding received of total funding required to operate service at 2019 levels. The row titled "2024 Weekday Proposed Percent of 2023 Service" shows a level of service for each rail line being proposed in the SAFE analysis compared to the 2023 schedule. The final row of this table shows where each rail line currently stands in terms of ridership compared to 2019 ridership data. The Connecticut Department of Transportation and its service providers actively monitored ridership levels as service levels were scaled up between 2021 and 2023. Ridership recovery rate was utilized to help identify proposed rail service changes included in the SAFE analysis. The following rail service changes are proposed. On the New Haven Line, Monday through Thursday, service is proposed to be reduced from 239 to 237 trains per day. Friday service is proposed to be reduced from 241 to 233 trains per day. On the New Canaan Line, weekday service is proposed to be reduced from 41 to 39 trains per day. On the Danbury Line, weekday service is proposed to be reduced from 28 to 26 trains per day. On the Shoreline East, weekday service is proposed to be reduced from 23 to 16 trains per day. Proposed service changes on the New Haven Line include proposed suspensions Monday through Thursday on PM peak eastbound train 1464, which departs Grand Central Terminal at 5:55 PM. Customers will have the option of train 1562, which departs Grand Central Terminal at 5:46 PM; PM off-peak westbound train 1585, which departs New Haven at 6:20. Customers will have the option of train 1583, which departs New Haven at 5:34 PM, or train 1587, which departs New Haven at 6:44 PM. Proposed Friday-only suspensions include AM peak westbound train 1417, which departs South Norwalk at 6:46 AM; and AM peak westbound train 1419, which departs Bridgeport at 6:28 AM. Customers will have the option of new train 3419, which departs Bridgeport at 6:21 AM and departs South Norwalk at 6:51 AM; AM peak westbound train 1427, which departs Bridgeport at 6:57 AM. Customers will have the option of train 1525, which departs Bridgeport at 6:42 AM, or train 1529, which departs Bridgeport at 7:12 AM. Additional proposed Friday-only suspensions on the New Haven Line include AM peak westbound train 1437, which departs South Norwalk at 8:26 AM; and AM peak westbound train 1537, which departs New Haven at 7:42 AM. Customers will have the option of new train 3539, which departs South Norwalk at 8:32 AM and departs New Haven at 7:39 AM; AM peak westbound train 1539, which departs New Haven at 7:55 AM. Customers will have the option of train 3539, which departs New Haven at 7:39 AM, or a new Super Express train 3541, which departs New Haven at 8:24 AM; PM peak eastbound train 1560, which departs Grand Central at 5:41 PM. Customers will also have the option of train 1562, which departs Grand Central at 5:46 PM; PM peak eastbound train 1568, which departs Grand Central at 6:07 PM; and PM peak eastbound train 1470, which departs Grand Central at 6:12 PM. Customers will have the option of new train 3570, which departs Grand Central at 6:12 PM. Additional proposed Friday-only suspensions on the New Haven Line include PM peak eastbound train 1572, which departs Grand Central at 6:44 PM. Customers will have the option of train 1570, which departs Grand Central at 6:31 PM, or train 1573, which departs Grand Central at 6:53 PM; PM peak eastbound train 1568, which departs Grand Central at 6:07 PM; and PM peak eastbound train 1470, which departs Grand Central at 6:12 PM. Customers will have the option of new train 3570, which departs Grand Central at 6:12 PM. Proposed service changes on the New Canaan Line include proposed weekday suspensions midday on northbound train 1722, which departs Stamford at 12:01 PM and arrives in New Canaan at 12:19 PM. Customers will have the option of train 1718, which departs Stamford at 11:01 AM, or train 1726, which departs Stamford at 1:01 PM; southbound train 1759, which departs New Canaan at 12:29 PM and arrives in Stamford at 12:46 PM. Customers will have the option of train 1755, which departs New Canaan at 11:29 AM, or train 1763, which departs New Canaan at 1:29 PM. Proposed service changes on the Danbury Line include proposed weekday suspensions PM off-peak on southbound train 1895, which departs Danbury at 9:17 PM and arrives in South Norwalk at 10:15 PM. Customers will have the option of train 1889, which departs Danbury at 6:47 PM, or train 1897, which departs Danbury at 10:32 PM. Northbound train 1890, which departs South Norwalk at 11:17 PM and arrives in Danbury at 12:08 AM. Customers will have the option of train 1882, which departs South Norwalk at 9:10 PM, or train 1894, which departs South Norwalk at 12:35 AM. The proposed Shoreline East weekday service changes are shown on the screen. Westbound AM trains proposed for suspension include trains 1627, 1645, and 1649. Westbound PM trains proposed for suspension include trains 1673, 1685, 1693, and 1699. One eastbound AM train is proposed for suspension, train 1604. Eastbound PM trains proposed for suspension include trains 1618, 1638, and 1646. Proposed service changes on the New Haven Line, New Canaan Line, and Danbury Line did not trigger the major service change threshold, and no analysis was needed. Shoreline East schedule changes did, however, exceed the major service change threshold with a 30.4% decrease in Monday through Friday service observed in the proposed schedule. Analysis was performed on the scheduled changes, and there were no findings of disparate impact or disproportionate burden on Shoreline East. Proposed rail fare changes include an approximate 4.5% increase for Metro North fares in Connecticut, Shoreline East fares, and Hartford Line fares, excluding monthly school passes. This is an approximate value as the average change in fare varies by origin/donation, as well as the pass used. Fares are also rounded to 25 cent increments. This increase aligns with a recently implemented 4.5% increase by the MTA for commuter railroad fares in New York. This is the first Metro North fare increase in the state of Connecticut since January 2018, and Shoreline East fares have not increased since November 2016. Hartford Line fares have not increased since the launch of the service. Lastly, there were no findings of disparate impact or disproportionate burden in the proposed rail fare changes. This slide demonstrates a sample of the change in fares by line: the impact to customers following the approximate 4.5% increase for Metro North Railroad ranges from $0.50 to $1 for one-way peak trips and $9 to $18 for monthly tickets; the impact to customers following the approximate 4.5% increase for Shoreline East ranges from $0.25 for one-way trips and $5.25 to $10.50 for monthly tickets; finally, the impact to customers following the approximate 4.5% increase for Hartford Line ranges from $0.25 for one-way trips in Connecticut to $5.25 to $10.50 for monthly tickets within Connecticut. This slide demonstrates what Metro North Railroad customers traveling to Grand Central from Stamford or New Haven could expect to pay. For example, a one-way ticket between Stamford and Grand Central is increasing from $15.25 to $16. For additional context, we're showing what it may cost to travel between Connecticut's urban areas, like New Haven and Bridgeport. Likewise, this slide demonstrates what Shoreline East users traveling end-to-end could expect to pay. For example, a one-way ticket between New London and New Haven is increasing from $10.25 to $10.75. We also show what an intermediate station to New Haven fare will look like. Lastly, we're showing what it may cost for intermediate travel, like Grandford to Old Saybrook. Finally, this slide demonstrates what CT Rail Hartford Line customers would expect to pay. For example, a one-way ticket between Hartford and New Haven is increasing from $8 to $8.25. We include other station pairs, such as Meriden to New Haven and Berlin to Springfield for additional context. For more details on the proposed train schedules and fare tables, please visit the department's webpage Proposed bus service changes seek to better align the bus system with ridership demand, promote efficiency, and make these routes more convenient and easier to use. Several types of bus service changes are proposed. They include: adjustments to increase service frequency on two CT Fast Track routes; decreasing frequency on the Dash Shuttle; restructuring CT Transit Route 69 and CT Fast Track Route 102; discontinuing five routes and replacing them with new or existing CT Fast Track routes; adding three new bus routes, two in New Haven and one in Hartford. Three new bus routes are proposed. In New Haven, CT Transit Route 216 is a new bus route that would operate between New Haven and Meriden. CT Transit Route 262 is a new bus route that would operate between New Haven and Milford. In Hartford, CT Fast Track Route 125 is a new bus route that would operate between Hartford and the Berlin Turnpike. It replaces four existing routes: Route 45X, 47B, 907, and the Dash Shuttle service from Monday to Wednesday. The benefits of this route include extended hours of operation, a simplified, consistent schedule, and service to more destinations along the Berlin Turnpike compared to the existing routes that it will replace. In terms of travel time, it will be comparable to Route 47B and 10 minutes less than Route 69. For former Route 907 customers, the fare will be lower since Route 125 will charge local fares instead of express bus fares. In addition, changes are being proposed to 10 other CT Transit and CT Fast Track routes. These types of proposed service changes include: increasing service frequency. For Fast Track Routes 144 and 153 on weekdays, the time interval between buses would be reduced from every 60 minutes to every 40 minutes. Also, CT Fast Track Route 153 would be rerouted via Albany Avenue and Bloomfield Avenue to restore service to the University Hartford campus. Decreasing service frequency. The Dash Shuttle would change from a Monday through Friday schedule to a Thursday through Sunday schedule, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Route restructuring. CT Transit Route 69 would be rerouted and end at Newington BA Hospital. Service to Willard Avenue and Berlin Turnpike would be replaced by the proposed CT Fast Track Route 125. CT Fast Track Route 102, Hartford, New Britain, Bristol, would have all of its trips rerouted to create two-way service to Forestville Commons. No change to the current level of service is proposed. Route elimination. It is proposed to discontinue CT Transit Route 45X Berlin Flyer and replace it with a new CT Fast Track Route 125. CT Transit Route 47B, Berlin Turnpike, is proposed to be discontinued. Service on Prospect Street in Weathersfield would be provided by CT Route 61 and on the Berlin Turnpike by the new proposed CT Fast Track Route 125. It is proposed to discontinue CT Fast Track Route 140 CCSU Connector because of low ridership. Alternate services linking Central Connecticut State University Campus and multiple CT Fast Track stations include Routes 128, 144, and 507. CT Transit Route 907, Newington Express, would be discontinued and replaced with the proposed CT Fast Track Route 125 between Newington Park and Ride and downtown Hartford on weekdays. It is proposed to discontinue CT Transit Route 923 Bristol Express. CT Fast Track Route 102 would be a replacement as it provides a similar geographic coverage. Thirteen routes have proposed service changes. The changes for 11 bus routes triggered CT DOT's major service change threshold. These 11 routes were evaluated for any impacts to minority and low-income populations. For more details on the proposed bus route changes, please visit the department's webpage The analysis found the proposed change to express Route 907 resulted in a disparate impact to minority populations. This is because the route serves an area with a higher concentration of minorities and is proposed to be eliminated. To address this impact, the new CT Fast Track Route 125 would replace To address this impact, the new C T Fast Track Route one two five would replace Express Route nine oh seven, offering increased frequency and local fares instead of express fares. Also, the changes to the Dash Shuttle plan of service resulted in both a disparate impact to minority populations and a disproportionate burden to low-income populations. This is because of the change in days when the Dash Shuttle will operate and the demographics of the population served by the route. To address this impact, from Monday to Wednesday, the new C T Fast Track Route one two five would replace the Dash Shuttle service. There were no impacts associated with the other routes analyzed. Following a twelve-month suspension of bus fares during twenty twenty-two, fare collection resumed in spring twenty twenty-three. Per federal guidance, the resumption of fares required a fare equity analysis. Upon conducting the analysis, C T D O T determined there were no findings of disparate impact or disproportionate burden as a result of reinstating fares. After all of the hearings have taken place and the comment period has closed, the department will review and consider all comments received and make changes to address those comments if needed. Comments and any changes will be included in the final SAFE analysis. Once the final SAFE analysis is completed, a recommendation will go to the D O T Commissioner for review and approval. Proposed rail service and fare changes, if approved, would take effect as follows. For Metro North, rail service changes would take effect on October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three. For Shoreline East, rail service changes would take effect in late twenty twenty-three. An exact date is being determined. Metro North and C T rail fare increases would take effect November first, twenty twenty-three. Bus service changes, if approved, would take effect on March tenth, twenty twenty-four. Changes to C T Fast Track one oh two would go into effect November fifth, twenty twenty-three. Communication to our customers will continue, and final rail and bus schedules will be shared before any changes take place. Four public hearings are scheduled to receive public comments on the draft SAFE and proposed changes. These include two in-person hearings and two virtual hearings. In-person hearings will be held on Monday, October second, twenty twenty-three, in New Haven at the Kennedy Mitchell Hall of Records from six P M to eight P M with open house from five P M to six P M. Tuesday, October third, twenty twenty-three, in Hartford at the Capital Region Council of Governments Office, from six P M to eight P M with an open house from five P M to six P M. Virtual hearings via Zoom will be held on Wednesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-three, from eleven A M to one P M and from six P M to eight P M. Department staff will also be at Stamford Transportation Center in the main concourse slash waiting area on Thursday, October fifth, twenty twenty-three, from three thirty to seven P M with information regarding this service and fare equity analysis. As mentioned earlier, comments regarding the proposed service and fare changes in service and fare equity analysis will be accepted until eleven fifty-nine P M on October sixth, twenty twenty-three in a variety of ways. You can register to speak at a hearing. You may submit comment via email at D O T dot proposed changes at C T dot gov. You may also leave a comment via voicemail by calling eight six zero five nine four three six one two. Written comments can be mailed to Comments on Proposed Service and Fare Changes, Connecticut Department of Transportation, two eight zero zero Berlin Turnpike, P O Box three one seven five four six, Newington, Connecticut, zero six one three one dash seven five four six. Finally, a copy of the draft S A F E analysis and comment form can be found at the following public libraries: Waterbury's Silas Bronson Library, New Haven Free Public Library, the Public Library of New London, Hartford Public Library, Park Street Branch, and Bridgeport Public Library. We would like to remind you about the brief voluntary feedback survey. Survey responses are anonymous. Your input is very important to us and helps us conduct the most inclusive and representative outreach possible. The link to the survey can be accessed at the bottom of the S A F E webpage at W W W dot C T dot gov forward slash D O T forward slash proposed transit changes. We will now begin to hear public comments. We ask that you please limit your comments today to the Service and Fair Equity SAFE analysis and the proposed service and fare changes. Speakers who have indicated that they would like to comment will be called upon by name and the number assigned to them when they signed in. In the interest of providing all speakers the opportunity to speak on the record, comments are limited to three minutes. Please note that no questions will be answered by the moderator or any of the panelists during the hearing or comments portion of the meeting. All comments made during the meeting will be recorded and transcribed for the record. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. The time is now six thirty-five, and we'll open up the public comment portion of tonight's hearing. We had two members of the public sign up to provide comment to the department this evening. First individual, Jay Sting. Okay, moving on to the second individual, Andrew Palaya.
All right, well, thank you. My name is Andrew Palaya, and I, uh, I live in Branford, and I work up in Groton. And I'm very thankful to the state of Connecticut for having Shoreline East that allows me to live in Branford and then work in Groton, which is quite nice. The drive is, uh, sort of ranges anywhere from about an hour to two and a half hours took me on Friday. And so up in, up in Groton, there's, uh, sort of two major employers, right? There's Pfizer, and then there's Electric Boat. Each one of these companies employs thousands of people. I think, yes, I think it's certainly thousands of people, and they've been hiring a lot in the time since the pandemic. And I work at one of these companies. And I know that in order to recruit more people, being able to live closer to New Haven or in, in the intermediate towns is very important. And so, um, the companies have been looking at, at ways to either work with the state in order to, um, provide some sort of a bus that goes there. That'd be very nice. Or just a company themselves provide sort of a way for employees to get there and back. So if that was provided, ridership would, would absolutely increase as people could now commute. Shoreline East would, would allow commuting into New London and into Groton, whereas that that's very difficult right now. Yeah, and then that, and then that's it. And then as for people going to New Haven, I know quite a few people who either used to take Shoreline East or, or would like to take it. And I know that there's big concerns over, uh, there seems to have been a period before the pandemic where trains didn't show up and, or were quite late. And a lot of these people work at the hospital down there, and it's very important that they can actually get to work. And I know I've not experienced that myself and taking the train in every day. And so I think if public trust could be brought back, that the trains actually run on time and show up, that the ridership would come back. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andrew. So at this time, we have no new members of the public register to provide comment. If anyone came in during the presentation, please visit the sign-in table in the back of the room. And if we get anyone else who registers to provide comment this evening, we'll reopen the hearing. But at this time, we're going to pause the public hearing at six thirty-seven P M. P M, we are reopening the public hearing. We have had no new members of the public register to speak this evening. We want to thank everybody for showing up and attending tonight's public hearing in Hartford. The public comment period is open until October sixth, eleven fifty-nine P M. Please visit our web webpage for more information on tonight's presentation and details on how to provide public comment. The time is now eight P M, so we are concluding tonight's public hearing. Thank you.